And so I am going to call this meeting to order at this Grafton Board of Library Trustees Meeting of June 18th, 2024 at 7:00 PM.
7:05.
7:00, sorry, thank you, 7:05 PM. So, welcome, everybody. We're excited to welcome Tom again for his, in his third week as a library director. So, super excited.
11th day.
Yeah.
12th day.
12th day.
Flying by.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yep. And I don't, have you met everybody in the room? I know you met Chris coming in.
Chris coming in. Yes.
Carrie.
Erin.
We're not going to make you.
Friends meeting.
Yeah.
We met briefly. I'm John.
John. Sorry, I mean, names, you know, come and go.
I caught you on the way out.
Yeah, we met the other day in the library. Wonderful place to meet people.
And you've got the whatever 30-ish names of all the staff memorized?
I know Cindy.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing to know Cindy?
Yeah, well, you know.
I know your name.
I'll just leave it. I'm just going to put it out there.
Yeah.
I'm teasing Cindy, of course.
It's an amazing thing, I'm sure.
I'm privileged to be able to say that I know Cindy.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the right answer.
Yes.
Sounds great. So, we're just going to, we're going to dive right into the agenda unless there's anybody else, anything else that someone wants to do as an intro?
No, but I do have a, just a technical matter, and maybe I'm blasting the airs off of anyone who will listen to this. And maybe to Tom and Chris, who are new to the mic in this setup, is that sometimes, I know I have a tendency to kind of sit back, but for everyone to be picked up on the mic for the playback, you know, you'll want it reasonably close to your face.
Okay.
So. And we are, we are being recorded. That, I think we mentioned this early, I don't know if everyone was in the room, but we get, you know, we get playback on Grafton Community Television as well as YouTube. And just as a reminder, right, there are cameras around the room. Depending on who's speaking, the camera will be pointing to you. So, keep that in mind. Great. So, I am going to just start with the minutes, which I don't think we've received yet. Carrie?
I.
Any update on that?
I do have them on my list. Roger, did you have the agendas? You were going to send me the Word agendas as a template?
Okay, so I will, okay.
If you wouldn't mind, because that would just really help me get started.
All right.
And then I'm going to lock myself in a room.
All right. So, I will send you the, the Word templates for each of those meetings. And I also owe you the executive sessions. I took the notes of who did the motion.
You mentioned that last time, so that would be certainly very helpful.
So, that was April 3rd and April 24th. And I guess, in all fairness to Carrie, who has hours' worth of work in front of her, and even though I'm bringing it up, I'm going to sort of cop out and not volunteer, to see if, with all the meeting minutes ahead of Carrie, who has graciously volunteered to do them, whether or not we can give our colleague a break?
Yeah, I was going to.
And not add another meeting.
Yeah, I was going to actually ask that. Are you taking, are you doing the minutes from the video recordings?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, so really, anyone could volunteer to watch the recordings and put together the minutes, which of course is just kind of a bulleted highlight list of the actual meeting.
Do you want, do you want some help doing the minutes?
If somebody would like to do some of them, that would be awesome, but, but I can just kind of work my way through too. So, you know, I know everybody's busy for the summer.
And I'll add that one of the things that oftentimes when we've had, and this is not only Library Trustees, but when boards and committees have had paid staff, oftentimes you see really detailed minutes, but in the grand scheme of things, it doesn't have to be really verbatim. And I think sometimes we can get caught in the weeds to try to, to do things word for word.
Yeah, I'm definitely not going to do it.
No.
And then the executive session ones should be quick. So, why don't I, like, why don't I take you before the next meeting? Let me, I'll do my best to get as much done, and if I'm still remiss in finishing them up, then maybe we can consider, you know.
And I'll get you the Word, the Word versions of each of the minutes, the, each of the meetings, pardon.
That, that would absolutely help me very much, because then I can just use that as the template and then just kind of fill in, you know, from the.
And then I will actually do the executive session minutes for the April 3rd and April 24th meetings.
Okay, that, that would be great.
You're going to do, Roger, you're going to do April 3rd and April 24th?
No, the meet, the meeting, the, the executive sessions.
That's, yeah, that's what I meant. Sorry. The executive sessions on those two days.
Okay, thank you, Roger. That would be great.
So, Carrie, I can do one now, but not next month.
Oh, okay. Well, how about you do today's?
I have a break in my classes, so.
Do you want to do the ones for today and then?
Take notes for today? Well, oh, when we view the video.
Correct.
Yes. I will do today.
Sounds great. And yeah, just for Kristen and Tom, right, so we normally have an administrative assistant that's, that administrative assistant attends these meetings and is responsible for those notes. So, we've been without that for quite a while. So, that's a little, one of the reasons why we're a little bit behind on the meeting minutes. Okay. So, we will defer the approval of those meeting minutes until next month?
Thank you.
Yep. Bills, we have two warrants that were sent around by Eileen last month. Warrant 48 for a total of $7,380.89 and a second warrant number 50 for $74,368.51. And an interesting tidbit, I'm not sure I remember, but Roger told me that the warrant number correlates to the fiscal week of the year.
Oh, my gosh.
I didn't know. So, that's fiscal week 48 and 50. And fiscal week 49, there were no bills paid that month, or that week, which, so they were probably just pushed into the 50. So, I will entertain a motion to accept, I guess we'll do them separately. Warrant 48.
So moved. For $7,380.89.
All right. Motion, motion made and seconded. Any discussion on warrant 48? All right, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, declare the motion carried. And then the second warrant number 50 for $74,368.51.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any questions on this?
So, I just am curious, there's one line item for $60,000?
Yep.
Just curious what the contents of that is.
So, that would typically be the library director would respond to that, but I don't know if you know the answer to that?
I saw it.
Yep.
So, Eileen and I had worked on it, and I did notice it was considerably larger than I was expecting. And there was one line on there for $60-plus thousand dollars for cupola repair, I believe it was for.
Correct. Correct. That's the Alston Company, and they're the ones that are responsible for the repair.
So, it, I think it's, it's like, it was like a three payment plan? Was that it?
Correct. It was multiple.
Right, so it was, it was a, it was a built-up payment.
So, is the 60 for the totality across the entire, or is that one of the three?
That's one of the three. Yeah, so the total project was somewhere in the order of $240,000. And that was funded by a number of different sources, including the, the library, the capital campaign, the CPC. Did I get that right? CPC?
That's correct.
And was there a fourth?
Yep, and also the wonderful grant we got, mass preservation.
Oh, yeah, mass preservation grant.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Maybe I wasn't paying attention, but did you mention the trust funds or the gift to Carol?
Yeah, he said the library.
Correct.
Oh, you did, all right.
Yep. Yep. And the library trust, if you didn't hear that. So, the, this group manages a number of trusts.
Yep.
Where people have, generally have passed away and left money to the library as part of their will, and then, so we manage some of those trusts.
Okay.
And the capital campaign for the engineering services, right, or the estimate, architectural.
And some additional monies we did.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Any other questions on that warrant? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, declare the motion carried. And this was sort of a question for, maybe for Roger, but now that we have a library director, are we still going to be going through those as a board? Like, I know we don't have to sign them, but.
No, we don't need to sign them.
But we still would, we still go through them, right? Okay. Thank you. I thought so. I thought so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, the exercise of going through them is when Eileen emails them to you.
Correct.
Right.
And so, at this meeting, I would say that if we didn't want to sign something, we would probably just, you know, not vote in favor of it.
Yep.
Right? Because prior, we were just, we were, we were reviewing them as we signed them.
Right.
But not every trustee had, was signing.
Had an opportunity to sign it, right?
So, so again, it's the same process.
So, I, just Chris, for your benefit, the, Eileen is the financial person at the library. She's the one that's paying all the bills, puts together these warrants. When we, without the director, the trustees would go in and sign, because we had to sign off on them before they were paid. But now that Tom's library director, he'll be doing that.
Okay.
But regardless, she sends those warrants to the board.
Okay.
Gives us an opportunity to review them. Of course, you could always ask Tom questions in interim, but this would be the venue where you could also ask questions.
So, we needed at least two trustees to sign.
Okay.
But now that Tom is here, Tom can sign, and then we just review.
Understood. Okay.
But we still needed to vote on them.
We still will, yeah, we'll still bring them to this board and vote on them. Yes.
So, I count as two trustees.
That's right. Wow, dude, it's super powerful.
I just wanted that on record.
And many of the, I mean, if you look through the warrants, many of them, you know, Ingram Library Service, Amazon, a lot of them are pretty straightforward. You know, most of them are obviously content, books. Occasionally, you'll get something for HVAC repair. I mean, the Alston Company, it's kind of hard to know by the company name, but, so, certainly open to asking questions in this meeting. All right, no one or questions? We'll move on to ongoing business. Grant updates. This typically would be the director. I don't know if we have any updates. I know we, we received the Leeds reimbursement. I think that we went over that a couple of meetings ago. So, that's a pool of money that goes back into the, the building, building account, and it can be used for either paying down the debt, or it can be used for other projects related to the actual construction itself.
A quick question, does that mean that we actually know it went into the account?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. All right, so no, no, any questions by the committee on the building grant or anything related to the building program? I'm not sure how that ended up on the agenda, if anyone had something specific.
I'm looking at the, Mr. Chair, I'm looking at the, does any of this have to do with this Alston Company change order request?
Actually, you know what? I think that's a good opportunity to discuss the, the Alston change orders, right? That's in your packet for today?
Yes.
Because it is related to the construction itself. I guess it doesn't really matter between this one and C. So, there are two, so the town administrator approached Tom and I. There were two change orders related to the HVAC systems in the library. Apparently, the compressors are not working. I haven't heard anything directly from the library about that, but they required some repairs. So, they were looked at by Renault Electric. It was determined that a couple compressors were failing and some of the electronics units were failing. Of course, the hardware itself is under warranty, because, right, it's only a couple of years old. So, those are being covered by the manufacturer warranty, but the replacement, you know, the labor involved with replacing the items is not covered. So, the town administrator has come to us with two. Two, I guess they're not called warrants, but two bills. They're not really change orders either, but they're, they're bills. So, the first one was for a total of, an estimated cost of $7,100, and the second one was an estimated cost of $5,300. You know, once Renault, once they actually do the repairs, you know, they'll be invoiced for the actual amounts. I think this is primarily for informational purposes? Yep, go ahead, Erin.
I'm not sure that I have this.
That was in one of the packets that was.
I handed it over. It should be coming your way.
Okay.
I did give it to you.
It was on a staple.
All right.
Yep.
There's a couple. That was the one that I had piled in front of me.
So, it's the, it's the first two, I'm sorry, it's the third and fourth pages of the, of the stapled packet. I, you know, Tom and I had a discussion with the town administrator, and considering it was part of the original construction project that's, you know, kind of failed and needs to be replaced, the thought was that this would be paid out of Leeds reimbursement monies. I don't think this board needs to vote on it. It was unclear from William and Evan if this board had to vote on that.
Well, do we have the jurisdiction to vote on it, or is that a select board?
It's, it's a tough question, because I would say it could be the building and, you know, the library building committee. It could be this group, or it could be the town administrator, because they're the ones that are responsible for the, the actual debt. So.
The town administrator, did you say?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So, I don't know if anyone, I mean, do you know anything about the Leeds reimbursement? I mean, that's just the, based on the information we received. So, I see two options. One is we can just acknowledge that we received these and let the town administrator handle it, or we could vote to approve the expenditures via the Leeds if, if indeed the town decides to do that. It's a tough one.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Either you and/or the director clarify jurisdiction on this.
So, we did check on jurisdiction, maybe jurisdiction about, was that about two months ago when we brought it to the board? And the MBLC said that that goes back into the building account. And that's really all that they said.
Oh.
So, the question, of course, is who manages that building account?
May I make a suggestion?
And I will honestly say I'm not, it's unclear to me.
So, that was, that was question number one, is where does the Leeds money go back?
Yep.
Into? And you said it goes into?
It goes into the building account.
Building account.
That we still have.
So, we still have a building account?
It's basically the account that all the funds for the building project were, you know, used for expenditures, which is being paid back by that bond, right, that the town brought out in town meeting.
Right, so the building account is being used to pay back the loan, the bond?
That, I mean, theoretically, the building account would have had a balance of zero, right? Because it was all expended on the account, but the Leeds money goes into that same account because it was a reimbursement.
Right.
And then it, it sits.
It sits, and my impression from the MBLC was that the town decides on if they're going to just use it to pay off the bond, or they're going to use it for other building costs.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a suggestion then, is just so that it doesn't ever have to come back to this board, we've looked at it, I would say that we could make a motion to, you know, just that we've received this and that we agree with, not that we have to approve it, right, but we agree with, you know, the statements presented to us. You know, that way, if it does come back to us, that we needed to vote on it, that it had to be paid out of that then. I mean, I think we kind of cross that T and dot that I.
Has.
Any additional comments, Roger?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So, on these facts, I mean, I don't, I don't have the expertise and, nor was I there to weigh in on whether this is accurate or not, just because it's, it's a technical matter within HVAC. And I don't have an HVAC background. So, I don't know if, if we can say we agree with the statements. Has the town, has anyone in town with better expertise in this area reviewed this?
Yeah, I would answer that two ways. One is I did respond to William Blake and Tom saying, you know, it seemed kind of expensive considering that it was just labor for repairing, you know, these two items. He came back and said, you know, obviously, Renault has all the experience, they've done this many times, and this is what it costs, and that he agreed with the charges. And then my second question was about Leeds, and he just kind of bounced it back. So, that's why I don't really know the answer.
And as far as Leeds money, that is a, that is a fund similar to capital that, or, and friends' monies or whatever, that perpetually just stay under our purview versus going back in free cash, right?
Whoa, 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 whoa. The friends, the friends money is not under the purview.
No, 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 no.
Didn't say friends. Didn't say friends.
No, no.
No. I heard friends.
No, I misspoke. I misspoke. I was trying to make, I was trying to make a point.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Or run, explain the parallel. So, I apologize for that misstatement. What I'm referring to then is, is trying to delineate and give an example, is what I was trying to do, between the monies that are under the town, that eventually go back to the town, such as that which we then certify as free cash.
Yeah.
And that which is not underneath the town, that is either under, underneath the trustees or, you know, and remains as such, similar to the trust accounts and such.
I don't believe so.
Yeah, this is totally separate from any trust accounts that the trustees have control over.
All right. So, my, but my point is that once the fiscal year starts on July 1, does, does this go back to the town, or does this stay in some separate account? They'd be spent only for libraries' purposes?
Well, I think it might.
That I, that I cannot answer. I can't answer that without, without William.
Yeah, I agree with what Erin said, but I don't have a problem with us voting on it. I think, my understanding is the Leeds certification money goes to exactly what you said. It goes back into that account. It could be used. Now, we have this expense which we didn't anticipate. So, if we don't use the Leeds money, it's going to have, have to come out of the town's money somewhere. So, it makes sense for it to be used. But that, I, my understanding with the Leeds money, it can be used, it's supposed to be used basically to help reduce the bond.
I don't think that, yeah, correct. I don't think there's any question that it can be expended out of the Leeds account. I think the question is, who has jurisdiction over that jurisdiction, over that account?
I would think.
And I don't have a good answer, because William, this was, this was just last week, and William didn't respond, you know.
I would say the town administrator, and we are stewards of the, of the library, so we have to oversee it. That's why I think we should just say, hey, yeah.
I like Erin's idea.
And we've worked with Renord, Renard a lot. They're the ones that've done, they did, you know, I believe they did most of the electric work in the building. We had them do the clockwork, and we had them do extra outlets, which they did a great job on.
Right.
So, I mean, and we have, is this the thing that was creating that noise? Do we know?
I know. I was wondering the same.
Because I don't know if Tom knows about that, but there was this awful noise that was, that was happening, right? Somewhere up in the.
It's still happening, yeah.
I, I was on record as saying it was probably fault of justice, but, you know, that's, I was sort of the bad.
Have they looked at that at all?
So, well, it's a good question. I don't know, I mean, you have the same information that I do. I don't know if, in the process of looking for issues or testing the system, that's when these issues were identified. But I have not heard anything that it was causing any of those noises or anything.
Do you think William Blake would be in charge of that now? Now that we have library directors, William Blake's still going to do the facilities management, do we think?
Nope, that'll end up being Tom, the library director's role.
Because I think that's, I think we should let Tom be aware of that, because if, maybe this is the time for us to repair that too, if that can be repaired.
I don't think that was ever determined what that issue was, so there's really nothing to repair.
Okay.
Unless by chance, this was that.
That could be it. Okay.
So, I, I think, I, I mean, I like Erin's idea also, so would you like, I'll entertain a motion?
Sure. Sorry, I just had two, two quick things.
Yep.
So, the first one was just that I had heard from at least one of the librarians that, well, back up a second, there'll be three things. So, one is that I've heard constantly that there are, there have been HVAC issues. I think, I think most of us know that, that there's been issues just setting the temperature, getting consistent temperatures throughout the library. I did hear very recently, when Chris and I were doing the walkabout, that there was specifically like the staff bathroom, I think it was, what, like, didn't seem to get any airflow. So, this seems like it could be related. We can see if this takes care of that. But I guess my actual question was, is, are we going, is the, has the town already told Renaud to go and do this work?
My understanding is that William's waiting for some messaging from the board.
Okay. I'll just point out, it's, because it was dated June 5th, which is a while ago, and it also says, if not accepted within one day, the, the prices can change. So, I just kind of wanted to, to point that out, that they have, they have the right to re-quote since we've taken longer than one day. So, yeah, that's all.
Yep. It's just an estimate.
Right.
So, Erin, what, what would you like to propose?
Yeah, so I think I would like to, to propose a motion to approve these, like, I thought that was a better way to do it.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the warranty work from Renaud HVAC in the estimated amounts of $71,000.
$71,000?
$71,000, thank you. And $5,300 to be paid out of the Leeds building account.
I second the motion.
Motion, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yep. Roger.
So, up to, in other words, is it, because it says you will only be billed actual, so for clarification, is, Erin, would your motion be then up to, I guess, $12,400? In other words, we're combining the amount, or are we separate? There are two different issues. Because they're two different units?
Two different units, but they both need to be corrected. So, I would, I'm okay voting them to them as a, as a combination.
Okay.
OU3 and OU5.
So, it's up to $12,400, right?
Well.
Or is it no more than, right?
Do we think we should, to do up to $5,000, $15,000? I just reread that. They said they have no control because of the rapid increase, so I know, what's today?
It's been 13 days since this.
So, do you think we should give ourselves a little wiggle room in case, so we don't have to go over this again?
So, we're not approving monies.
Okay.
We're just approving these, 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 um, these work orders and the amounts presented to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we are approving, as you've mentioned, the funding source.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so what she's saying is.
That's how it was presented to us.
So do, but what, what Dana's, is asking, I believe, is, you know, you, do you throw in fifteen percent for contingency and do, do we say up to, instead of twelve thousand four hundred, up to?
But I don't think that's necessary, but.
But we say under the discretion of the TA?
Right, because, you know, this is not a trust, right, that we are, um, you know, approving a certain amount of monies from, to be paid from the, you know, the Leeds certified.
Okay.
You know, funding source.
So as, as stated, uh, that would be twelve thousand four hundred dollars.
What happens if it's more than that, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, why don't we just make it fifteen thousand?
We'll have to come back here, again, and vote again, right?
Because we should get this done, because it's been a pain, right?
Yeah.
And it's summer and it's getting hotter and hotter.
Would you like to amend the motion to increase the amount by two, two fifteen thousand?
Yeah, I will amend the motion to, um.
Fifteen percent is fourteen two, but do we want to just make it fifteen, just in case?
Mm-hmm, yeah. To, um, approve, uh, monies up to fifteen thousand dollars in total for, um, uh, unit OU three, uh, and unit OU five, uh, in the work orders presented to us from Renaud HVAC.
Are you getting seconded, the motion?
All right. Uh, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? I, I opposed? Thank you for that, because both, both those, um, you know, we were lacking a little bit of information, so thank you for that.
Did you raise your hand?
No.
Oh.
I have to check the camera feed.
Unintentional, I was just, uh, one of those.
I didn't hear an "I", just, he rubbed his eye.
I rubbed the "I", did not say "I". I will, I will refrain from any, uh.
I don't think video replay is allowed, is it? Video replay is not allowed?
Yeah, don't you throw the little, what's the commercials, you throw the red flag?
Throw the flag.
Yep.
Uh, you know, when it gets posted online, right?
Yep. All right, thank you. So moving on to children's room update.
Mr. Chair, uh, just, um, I guess a point of order on the, on the agenda. So, the previous two, on the cupola aluminum versus copper, we, we, um.
My plan on was covering that in the construction updates.
Okay, just, all right, perfect, all right.
May I, um, may I just interject before we move on from grant, grant updates, MPLCP? So, so you mentioned that it probably shouldn't have been on the agenda, but I think, um, you know, from, from Tom's, you know, office, this would be the opportunity to, to talk about any updates, if there is any. Um, and, uh, I, I think we probably wanna at least leave it on, and then you could say, you know, no updates and, and move on, right?
Yep.
Until like, this is completely closed out. Yeah?
Good idea.
Yep.
Is there, and we should probably talk about what the other items he'd be responsible for as well.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, the director's report is down in number eight.
Yep. Correct, that's his typical, the typical director's report. But if there are ongoing business with, with the construction, the children's room, the grant updates, we might as well keep it on the agenda.
Yep.
But Tom knows that, and if, like you said, like Erin said, if there was nothing to discuss, then we just pass over it.
Um, I, I just have a question for the grant updates. A- are there any filings required for the MP, MPLC? Um, you know, I know Tom just came on board, but, um, do we?
No, I think everything's been, been submitted.
William Blake's been working on that.
Yeah.
He should be up to date. It's supposed to happen pretty quickly, I believe, within the next couple of months. I think William told me maybe by the end of August, it was supposed to be earlier, but I think he told me they've been given more time to complete the project.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't remember if we mentioned this last week, but the, um, library building renovation group was dis, um, decommissioned? What's the right word?
Disbanded.
Disbanded, thank you, disbanded, decommissioned. We weren't decommissioned, we're still, it was disbanded, so, um, that committee is no longer responsible for, yep.
Great, well, thank you for your contributions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking that was last, was that not in our last month's meeting? No?
I don't think so, I think we were getting ready to.
Thank you to everybody that worked on the committee. Doug worked on it, and so did many people from the community for many years, correct?
Yep, yeah, so that was, uh, there was a committee that was responsible for managing the construction and renovation project. And it, it included trustee representative, which I was that, um, there was like the finance committee, the select board, you know, from the major departments in town. Um, there were representatives there, and then of course, the architect, lead architect, and the, uh, owner's project manager, and the clerk of the works were all on that committee.
Okay.
Yep. Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, when is that committee being disbanded and what determines when that, the, the, the planning and building committee?
Yep, so it, it was, yeah, it was disbanded on either the first, it was the first week of June.
Okay.
And so it's already been disbanded, and that, it was, uh, terminated or disbanded because we paid the final balance of the construction project.
So did that happen on its own? Was that, was that, um, technically at that time, um, moderator appointment for that co- committee? In other words, was it the charge or the vote at town meeting that once there were certain conditions that were satisfied, that it disbanded on its own, or did the moderator or select board or someone actually affirmatively vote to disband that?
The committee voted to disband it, but I don't remember if the, um, I presume the moderator ended up doing the same, but when we paid the last bill, there was no other bills to pay.
Okay. But who determines that? In other words, who, who told the committee that there were no bills to pay?
That's the owner's project man, the OOPM and the clerk of the works, you know, they're looking through, they're the ones that are managing the budget, and they're managing the relationship with the construction, um, company.
So, so since the committee doesn't appoint itself.
Yep.
That was my question. In other words, who is the appointing authority of that committee and, and what documents, who has officially documented that that committee is defunct?
That I would have to.
And it's completed its charge.
Yeah, I would have to check with the chair, with, um, um, Mary Fritz.
All right, Mary Fritz, yes.
She's the chair.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right, so moving on to the children's room update. Um, so I guess that would be Tom? Any update on the children's room?
In the, uh, replacement of the carpeting?
Yes.
Uh, the work has not begun yet. Still waiting for that to begin.
Yep.
I, I don't know as much of the backstory, so I'm not sure where the, um, when it was planned that they were gonna start laying down new, new carpet, but there hasn't been any movement there.
Okay. Um, is that something that you could bring up with William during your next, I don't know, do you have weekly meetings with William or Nevin, or? The Cal off, you do have daily.
Daily.
Yeah.
Daily emails, yes.
Yeah, so I would add that to your list of questions on just getting regular updates on when the anticipated, uh, you know, install date will start.
Okay.
Quick question. Do we, do we know if the carpet has been ordered, or assuming it has been, correct? It must have been ordered by.
Yeah, I think the, when, sorry, I didn't interrupt Tom, but when we met as a board and we voted on that process, I think it was ordered the next day, as soon as they were notified.
Okay, perfect.
And I believe that that is why, I mean, that's why the, the installation hasn't taken place yet, because we're waiting for the carpet to be delivered.
Okay, terrific.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. That's good.
Are there any, um, kind of new activities around just the temporary children's room?
Temporary children's room is thriving.
Yep.
And, um, that, uh, the staff has been wonderful in re-accommodating and, uh, and repurposing, um, so that, um, that we, we have, we have a place to offer the kids, the children. Um, it's, it's very active and being used heavily, which is wonderful to see. There is frustration on the part of everyone involved.
Staff, community?
Staff and community, and, uh, and so it's, it's, it's been a challenge. In my twelve days, I've gathered that, that, um, everybody would rather see it open, but, um, that said, the deci- I think the decision to, to wait and to reinstall was the right one. I mean, I think that's, that was the right move to make, um, because it's, it's the legacy that we're dealing with here, and so, um, as, as frustrating as it is, it's, it'll be better in the long term, and I, and, and we've been taking the time to explain that to community, um, to staff and community.
Yep.
Can I add something to that?
Yeah.
So, uh, so we did get like, uh, an, an email from a patron, you know, that was not very happy about the, us postponing the, uh, the opening of the children's room, but the way I believe we'd all kind of come to the inclu- the, the conclusion was that it's not really something that we had much of a say in, in a sense that we couldn't guarantee that the carpet would be installed correctly, safely, and that we wouldn't have to pull it up again in months or, or short years, or something like that, so I, I'd like to think that there really wasn't another viable option that we had, so.
Right, may I just respond to you?
Yeah.
Erin?
So, um, I think what you're intending to do right now is respond to that, that message, and I think that's important, because we did receive that message that said, um, you know, they advise the trustees to, uh, change their mind. You know, we had, had voted on this, um, you know, and it's unfortunate that we got that in, that this person, uh, opinion wasn't voiced before the decision was made. But, uh, I, I'm glad that you kinda spoke to why we made that decision, and feel free to elaborate too.
Yeah, again, I, I thi- I don't, i- it's almost like as if we, I don't, I don't wanna like redirect blame or anything like that, but it's almost like we didn't make the decision. It, it seems like that was the only decision we could really make. Um, and, and so it, it wasn't really just to respond to that one patron, but to kind of all patrons and, and the staff and everything. I don't, uh, we all want the children's room open. Um, my kids are, you know, just on the border of being able to use it, but I mean, uh, we still go in there and just chat with the children's room librarians, because, you know, we've, we've, you know, fostered great relationships with them over the years, so it's, it's, you know, heartbreaking to see them not in their, uh, kind of intended place, so.
Do you, do you think you have a sufficient response, or an appropriate response, I guess is the right word, um, for when this, and not just you, but the staff, when you're communicating with the community?
Um, so, the, the word that I've had from William and Evan is hopefully by the end of the summer.
Yeah, so I, I was more referring just the reason, like the whole reason.
Oh, the reason, yes, yes, yes. And, you know, and, and to kind of piggyback on what John was saying, when we, when we explain the reason why the decision was made, it's much clearer.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, if it was like, oh gee, we, we don't like that shade of blue, we wanna do it again, I think we would be getting a much different response.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
But, as, you know, as soon as you clarify the safety of the children,
Right.
then it's, it's hard not to see why that wouldn't be the best decision.
Yep.
It's very frustrating, because for us, for a room to be closed for a year, it's like, that's a year. But to a four-year-old, a year is, you know, a quarter of their life, and so, it, it, there is a certain urgency, but people are, are willing to wait for the, the better outcome overall. Um, people have, you know, the people that I've been talking to are, are adapted to the, um, to the setup in the community room. That poses further challenges for the library overall, though, because it means that there's, you know, a lack of space for adult programming.
Yep.
So, you know, it's, it's been, it's been a challenge with ripple effects, in effect.
And the friends, too.
And the friends, right. The friends haven't been able to have their, their alcove, what's it called officially?
Friends corner.
Friends corner, sorry. Alcove.
Alcove corner.
The friends grotto. But we do have the, um, the children's programming room is, is safe for us to use again.
Oh, great.
I believe that we are close to getting that.
That was gonna be one of my questions, that's great.
Um, so, you know, that, I think that would be a big move, uh, forward.
Okay.
For us.
I know Dana had a que- Dana had a comment.
Um, just, we did put a statement up on the website, which we had written and Tom approved.
Yes.
And it did, the major factor was the safety issue.
Mm-hmm.
We really, and as John was saying, we really didn't have a choice, because safety's important for the children, because it wasn't like a slam dunk deal, because we knew the carpet, the, those tiles could come up.
And they were popping, yeah.
It's just not worth it, so. It is on the website, so I'm glad.
Yes, it is, sorry, that's right. And posted to social media, I believe, as well.
Okay, excellent.
Okay, so as a board, do we feel like we need to respond to some of the, at least that one email that was sent to the board?
I think, I think this is the, this is the forum to do that, and I think John did that.
Did you not get it, Chris?
I did not, no.
Is that a new one?
So I'm not sure what, in specifics, what we're talking about.
So, so I'm curious, um, so is Chris not on the distribution list, because I think it was sent to the?
So this was like, right after the previous meeting, and then Doug, I don't know if you were updating it?
And it's still not corrected, so actually, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, Carrie, because if you need to send an email to the trustees, please include Chris separately. Um, Cindy Ite is out of the office, I think, for like a week or two, so that's why it hasn't been corrected yet.
All right.
What would the hassle be with just responding to that? Would that person, did that person provide their email address, or is that just?
Yeah, well, they sent us an email, so we can see the email address, but.
Actually, I'm not sure if we saw the email address, like, because it might have been done through the website.
Again, I don't, I don't know if it's, the way it was presented was, um, they disagreed with our decision, and they, they wanted us to resend, you know, to change, change our mind.
All right.
They urged us to change our mind. That's, that's how the email was presented, or the message. Um, I think this is a good forum to, to talk to the public.
Okay. All right.
You know, and we can certainly direct them to that other meeting and, and how we deliberated on that, because it was a very difficult decision. And we weren't all, um, of, of like mind at the beginning.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
Very true. Um, we, we could definitely send it to you, Chris, so.
I mean, I, if you think it's worthwhile, I, I just wasn't sure if I was missing other.
Well, it's always good to be aware of things, yeah.
Like, any feedback is, you know, it's something we need to take a look at.
Um, and did anyone get that second email? This past weekend?
What was that one?
Super bizarre.
I don't know.
So, Mr. Chair, when you say email, I, I thought that the distribution list for the trustees was a closed distribution list?
It is.
It is, one hundred percent.
Okay.
This is somebody going to the online form to contact the trustees and the library website.
And then who sends them to us?
As far as I know, it just gets sent to trustees@graftonlibrary.org, so we should all be seeing that stuff.
When was that one?
I think it was this weekend.
I didn't see it.
So what was the, the content or the nature of that?
What, what time is it? I think I'm, I, I'm.
I'm not used to not having my laptop available as chair, but, um.
There was one very, a very lengthy one that had a lot of.
It, it was, it was enough content that I think it was directed at the trustees, but it was such bizarre content that I was like, is this been written by some AI bot or some chat bot?
Ah.
Could've been, yeah.
But what I'll do is I'll just, um, find it and I'll send it after this meeting, so we can revisit that at our next meeting.
Okay, and then you wanna send the other one to, to Chris?
Yes.
So am I, am I to gather that it's so on the fringe that we'll just kind of defer that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we will defer that till next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other, any other updates on the children's room or related activities? It's great to hear that the programming room is getting close to be online, because I think, you know, even though you can't go in through the children's room to get to it, you can go outside and go in the other door.
Right, with nicer weather, it's accessible now.
And it'll be, that'll be great.
Um, uh, one more question regarding the children's programming room. So, am I correct in saying that unless there is a predicted storm, that the sandbags are removed from the back there, so that they're not a tripping hazard or pose an accessibility issue, if people are going from the, the current temporary children's room, the community room, to the outside, to the programming room, that there's, there are no barriers, both from an employee tripping or a patron tripping, or a downright accessibility issue, because now that's similar to like a curb cut, it's a sandbag, you know?
I would just defer to Tom, like, I would suggest that's what we do, is remove those sandbags out of the way, of course.
Right.
Which I think seems, seems like an obvious choice.
They are currently out, um, because of last Friday.
Okay.
We had, we had some, uh, some storms coming through, um, but no, I, I think that's right. I, I'll be moving them aside. Is there, is there a place where they go?
I think that.
I think that would be up to you and your, your custodial team, or custodian, custodian, team of one.
But there was no flooding, though, last Friday, though, right?
Hmm, right.
Not on that side of the building.
Not on that side of the building. I don't know if we wanna go into, do you want?
I don't know if we wanna talk about that.
I think we can, um, well, if it's not related to the children's room, let's move on and we can, we can.
It's not directly related to the children's room.
Okay. Okay.
I'm, I might, under my new business, I have some ideas around this, including what I call the grounds.
Okay. Um, okay, so, um, no other questions on children's room, we'll move to construction updates, which actually my update was related to the building committee, which we've already addressed. So next is fiscal year twenty-four budget update. I will say that I don't think.
I'm sorry, before we move on, just, so the cupola now, the anticipation completion date of the work on the cupola is August, is what I?
Yeah, I was gonna leave that until the director's report.
Okay.
And we talked about the cupola there.
Also, on the construction update, um, didn't know whether this was a related to our prior discussions regarding construction updates, there were two components, at least, to the flooding on the teen room side. And it had to do with whether the, call them tumblers or whatever, or, um, was it the door not, um, going down flush? Or, or was it a combination of that, in, in the way the current, um, um, drain, drain pipes, whatever, the, um.
Downspouts?
Downspouts were kind of not seamed, and water was coming in to that area, and so, this is my backdoor way of, of bringing the teen room door.
Makes sense to be in conviction.
Constructing the discussion.
Yep.
Um, because it really was a construction issue that we had discussed, and so, that the rain, uh, this most recent downpour did impact and somehow came underneath that door, and so.
So you can, that, that is true, Tom, then, so some, there was some flooding, and was it, how would you rate it as far as minor, major?
Uh, I would rate it as minor, so I went down, you know, when the rain came, uh, I went down to see what we, where we were, because I've, I've heard, I've been told that when it rains hard and fast, we, we do experience some, um, some creep in from there, um, underneath the door. It came about, about two feet in from the door, it was moist.
Yep.
There was no visible water, um, but if you, if you pushed on it, you would sense that there was water in the, in the carpeting.
Yep, so you had to put a fan or a dehumidifier or something to try to.
We put, uh, we had fans throughout the day, once, you know, once the rain stopped and, and that, that cleared it up.
Yep.
So what about, um, do you have an H, uh, do you have a wet vac in, in the building, and I can only speak to my own basement, we have this storeroom area rug where, I was actually quite surprised at how much water can come up with that, with an H, with a wet vac, even if it's not seemingly, um, visibly wet.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And I would, I'm just concerned that when we don't address that, or at least try to see if there's any water that can be sucked up with a wet vac, we really don't know how much water there is and how much creep there can be to compromise, uh, tiles and things like that.
Uh, as far as I'm aware, we do not have the, the wet vac.
Okay.
Um, we have, we've been using fans to dry it. Um, we have one that we, it seems we share with the, with the town.
Mm-hmm.
It's one, it's a little more of an industrial-sized one, and so that, that primarily we've been using, though I think sometimes it gets, it gets called away if there's a problem in, in, in the town hall.
All right.
So can we add that to your ask list when you talk to William?
Yeah.
Just, um, see if there's been any, um, mo- movement on assessing what's causing it and, and mitigating and repairing that?
Yeah. Could we consider getting our own HVAC, I mean, our?
Wet vac.
Wet vac, yeah.
I would certainly say you should consider that.
Because I think that's too important, not, we need to be able to dry it up.
But we also want, like, if, if we need funding to address the door, which we keep on, you know, we keep on bringing up, we really need a proposal to vote on, so I think we're all very supportive of, of remediation to stop that, you, stop that, that. But we also want, like, if, if we need funding to address the door, which we keep on, you know, we keep on bringing up, we really need a proposal to vote on, so I think we're all very supportive of, of remediation to stop that, you, stop that, that, you know, flooding on that side, and address the door, but, but we need something to vote on, so.
Which would be like?
A quote, like, uh, maybe a proposed solution in an estimate of the cost, and then we would make a motion to find the funding.
To fix the door?
It could be, fix what's causing the leak, right, the gutter is clogged, or needs to be rerouted, drainage should be rerouted, it could be repair the bottom of that door.
Okay.
Could be both.
What we thought, it could be both, or it could be all three, because the third one is gonna be the wet vac, you know, to clean up afterwards, but, um, just for historical context, the, the, the design of that door, as you close a door, the little, I don't know what you call those things.
Like tumblers, or whatever.
Tumbler, when you close a door, there was supposed to be something that kind of gets lowered.
Right.
And that, that, that blocks the water from coming under.
Okay.
Understanding is that that's been rusted, and just is non-functional, so we've been talking in this group for many months about, do we need to replace the door, do we need to replace that threshold on the bottom, they need to fix the gutter, so, as Carrie said, if you can evaluate what the town has already assessed, and if they've come up with an idea of a solution, and what the price would be.
And if they haven't, then we need an estimate, we needed some, an expert to take a look at it, and figure out what we need to do to get it fixed.
So this wouldn't still be covered under the renovation, then?
I think it could, I think that could be funded by Leeds Money, too, personally, I think that's appropriate.
I think it would be.
I mean, normally, it would go into like, your, uh, the repair and maintenance budget, but considering this is part of the original project.
Yep.
Can I add something?
I would, sorry, just one more piece, is I will say that the, those carpeting, you know, that carpet's designed to be able to get wet.
Right.
And dried, so it's not like, it's necessarily destroying that carpet, but it's been happening for a long time, so, we need to be aware of that. Sorry, John?
Nope, that's, uh, so I was gonna add, so Chris and I were doing the walkabout, I won't go into other walkabout stuff, but in relation to that door, um, I, I think the, the door issue is a potential issue that could, should be fixed, because maybe it would affect other things, like heating, bugs, animals, who knows, would, would come under the door, but I think the, uh, potentially, the more, um, root cause of the issue is that the gutters either A, leak, or overflow, or both. And so, I would start with the gutter, maybe just a cleaning to like, help remediate the issue temporarily, but then I think there needs to be a long-term fix, uh, to make sure it doesn't keep happening, because I believe the gutters were cleaned beginning of last year, or something like that, and it's happened again, so, like, last year, I went days after a rain, and there was still water coming out of the gutter. Um, so, again, I think they clog up, and then on top of that, when the water comes, uh, it, when it's, when it's full, the water comes through the seams, and it falls down, and it makes a mess, that's not even the whole issue, also the issue is there's no other drainage on that side of the building at all, so, hopefully, it can be remediated just with the gutters, and making sure, you know, maybe installing some sort of cover system, I've heard mixed, mixed things about those, but, um, if there's some sort of cover system that would keep them from getting clogged, then we could kind of guarantee that the water goes where it's supposed to, because, uh, like I said, if you look over there, all the gutters go straight into pipes that are not, um, there's no drain there, so, the water-
I took, I took that video the last time, and, and shared it, and I could see the water pouring from the gutter out onto the mulch.
Yep.
Rather than going down the downspouts.
Yeah, so I think it's-
And Evan was up there, I think, and he got soaked in his clothing.
Yeah, right, right, so I, I think the, the gutter is probably current, currently clogged, but then, I think there needs to be something long-term to prevent it from happening again and again, because otherwise, it'll just keep happening.
Okay, have you had the opportunity to meet DPW?
No.
Oh, okay, because DPW is certainly, um, familiar with fixing drainage issues, um, that might be a good opportunity to introduce you, introduce yourself to that group, have them come take a look at it, because it, maybe it requires like, a putting in a drywell there, or somehow connecting into the other drainage.
Yep.
Right, okay.
I'd heard that there were some issues about the historical value, and there were some limitations on what we could do for the drains.
Well, I think-
But I'm not sure whether-
Primarily, the gutters were copper, and the downspouts were copper for historical purposes.
Right.
But I don't, I don't know if that limits, I don't think that limits doing anything.
Okay.
That's a new part of the building, though, Doug, right?
What?
That's a new part of the building, so-
It is.
That's what I'm saying, I'm not sure it limits anything, because I don't think there, there's no restriction, like, historical restrictions on it.
Somebody mentioned it, so I just wanted to make sure.
It's a good question.
Yeah, good question. Okay, great, um, and I will just remind the group that, um, right, Tom's first meeting, you know, he didn't have time to prepare answers for all these questions, so it's perfectly okay to add it to your list, and bring it back next month. Um, and this is including the next topic, right, so next on the agenda was the fiscal year twenty-four budget update. And as the group knows, Tom had little to do with FY, actually, no, sorry, this is FY twenty-four, not FY twenty-five.
We're getting close to the end.
So, yeah, we're close to the, and, yeah, so we're close to the end of FY twenty-four, um, have you had an opportunity to review that with your department heads?
I have, yes.
Any idea where we are in that?
Right, so, um, one of the main, um, one of the main focuses that I've been addressing since I've been here, working with Eileen primarily, um, to keep up on the, on the budget, where it is, she's updating daily for things, which is fantastic, and so she's been a real godsend for me. And, um, one of my main concerns, though, has been the materials budget, because I'm, I'm, I was, I was concerned that we were not going to meet the required percentage for MBLC funding, and so-
Because of the hours change?
Um, and just in general, because we, we have to spend, I believe it's twelve percent of the overall budget on materials.
Thought it was thirteen, but I could be wrong. Was it because we're over or under twenty thousand population?
I think the hours affects what the percentage is.
The hours, too.
I think that was one of the concerns, so.
So are you concerned that we're gonna be under budget, or over budget?
That, my concern was under budget.
Under, okay.
Yes, because there were some areas that, um, that, uh, spending, uh, spending hadn't, hadn't taken place, as it should have been.
Yep, okay. So is there anything that this committee can do to help you, or is that just something that's, you're actively looking at?
It's, it's something that I'm working with all the department heads, they've been, they've been great, and, and, you know, rallying around it, and, and certainly understand the, um, the, the urgency of it. And so we're, we're looking at areas that we can get materials and, and make sure that we're spending that money. So, um-
Okay.
Do you need anything from us, like, any, do you, I mean, I guess, it's budgeted money, right, or do you think we don't have enough money to?
No, it's not, it's not not having enough money.
It's just that it hasn't been planned, to be-
Right, right, so, so, I mean, to be frank, there's, there are certain areas where we are under budget, because, like, the library hasn't been paying a director's salary for a while, or for the administrator, the administrative who works there. So, there is additional money that's available.
Right.
My concern is primarily, um, that we meet the percentage, twelve or thirteen.
Right.
Yeah, um, it's somewhere right around there, um, that we meet that, so that we don't jeopardize funding for the next fiscal year.
Right.
So, um-
And I would, I would presume that there are extenuating circumstances that, right, I mean, if, if there's something that was kind of beyond our control, that, you know, the director budget, that the MBLC might give some exceptions, but-
And, and that, that may very well be the case, I'm not sure, for the time being, um, instead of asking, instead of asking them for extenuating circumstances, we're trying to-
Trying to.
Trying to spend the money that has been allocated each department.
Do we know what the deadline is for us to do that?
Well, it's, I mean, it's July first, I mean, well, it's June thirtieth, right, um, so-
That's the end of the fiscal year.
June thirtieth?
Right, end of the fiscal year, so-
Do we think we're gonna be able to do that?
I think so, we are at ninety-one percent of what we're supposed to spend, right now.
Okay. Okay, do you know, so-
Just to make it interesting.
Oh, my God.
Yes.
Is that, um, I don't know the accounting system that is used, but is that like, a report easy to generate, or do you literally have to go ask each individual person?
That is, so-
And keep track of it on your own?
There are different ways to answer that, um, and so, again, I'll go back to Eileen, she's keeping track of this daily.
Across all the bu, across all the departments?
Across the entire budget, right, so she's adding in the figures whenever she, so, although, in the, in the, um, uh, in the warrant that we were talking about earlier, when you, when you're talking about the Ingram, excuse me, the Ingram invoices, the Midwest tape invoices, those are all going towards the materials budget. And so she's keeping that up daily, uh, and so we're, we're both looking at it a lot.
Okay.
Every day. Um, each department head, um, is responsible for certain areas of the collection, and so, um, I've been meeting with them to discuss, you know, where they are in the process of, of spending down that money. Ideally, we don't want this to be done now.
Yep, sure.
You know, this is, we would, I mean, I would rather it, we get to June first and say, oh gee, we don't have any more money.
Right.
Because we met it, we can't buy-
Right.
As much, um, but here we are, and so, um, we are, we are working to, to spend, um, as we need to. The, the difficult part with this is that there are, there is money encumbered in different areas, right, so, um, money may be in different parts of the process. So, a, a department head may have a, a cart that they are ready to submit to Ingram for however many, however much money for adult fiction, for, for instance, so it could be there, but, I mean, Eileen's not seeing that, so it's not really encumbered yet, but it's planned on being spent.
Sure.
Then, that moves to Allison Kushner, who places the orders, so it could be in that step of the process, then, we're waiting for the shipment from the vendors, so until that comes in, we don't really have an invoice in hand, so we don't know the exact amount, because if we are, if we order five new Colleen Hoover books, and they were out of stock on those, then it might be just a little bit different.
Mm-hmm.
So there's, 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 um, uncertainty along the way. When it gets to Eileen, she's getting the invoice of what we've received, and that's what she's entering into the, into the, into the, the budget that she works on the spreadsheet, and so that's what I'm working with most closely.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with conversations with the, with the department heads, and myself, I mean, I've taken to, I've, I've been doing ordering as well.
Yep.
Coming from where I was, um, this was, this was what I had to finish out in Springfield before I could come here, and why I couldn't get here sooner was, oh, I can't come, because I have to finish out the fiscal year budget, um, and, doing it again, so, um, so for good or bad, it's what I'm doing again. So, as I said, the, the update today was, I believe we were at ninety-two percent of it, and I know that there's some additional, um, money in the, encumbered money in the pipeline that will be coming through as well.
So the ninety-two percent is the Eileen invoice in hand?
For materials, now, again, this is just, this isn't the overall budget necessarily, which I think we're in a much better place on, um, this is primarily talking about the materials budget, which is what MBLC is, is looking for.
Okay, so at least a few more percent for-
I would, sorry, I would just say, certainly let us know as a board if there's anything that you need, any questions, or anything you need from us.
Well, you know-
Can we do anything?
Yeah, I mean, a clarification, and again, because it's so hard to know exactly how much money we are about to spend, because there's some fluctuation. For me, I would rather err a little bit over, and go to like, oh, we went to a hundred and four percent, because then we still qualify for the funding.
Yep.
As opposed to, oh, we ended up at ninety-seven percent, and maybe there's extenuating circumstances for three percent, I'm not sure, but, um, if I could just have a vote of confidence, that, um, there is money that could be used from the budget elsewhere, that could be reallocated in order to make sure that we don't have to, because right now, we keep having to kind of hit the brakes a little, like, are we going too far, are we, are we there yet?
Yeah, I would just encourage your department heads to get that in, right, as soon as possible, whatever they're gonna order.
Great.
Um, certainly, as a board, we have state funds that are available for spending, but, right, we vote on that each month, so it wouldn't be until the next meeting.
Right, right.
So I know Roger had, had a question.
Yeah, so, um, let's just tie our own with the number thirteen percent for a second. All right, just, just to go on a higher end.
Sure, sure.
All right, so we're talking about, about a million dollar budget, all right, so thirteen percent would be a hundred thirty thousand, ninety-two percent is a hundred and nineteen thousand plus change, which tells me that there's approximately an underspending of about eleven thousand dollars.
Wait, hold on just a second, he's talking about the material budget, a million is the entire budget, including all the salaries?
No, that, that, no, that's what I'm saying, in other words, the mater, in other words, you, the materials, thirteen percent of your budget needs to be spent on materials, so that's where I get the hundred thirty thousand.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, good job.
In other words, I'm rounding to a million dollars.
Right.
And so if we, if we agree that around a ninety-two percent has been spent of that hundred thirty thousand, that's, um, a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, meaning that there's approximately eleven thousand dollars that needs to be spent on materials, um, that's the one thing, that, the other thing is that, um, except for year-end interdepartmental transfers that allows the select board to transfer, you can't just transfer between like, um, staffing and materials, like, those two budget line items that comprise the whole budget. I just wanted to let you know that tonight, unless there was any adverse vote, that as a block of interdepartmental transfers, um, they split it up into two, select board met in joint session with the finance committee at six o'clock, and there were seventeen thousand three sixty, there was a nine thousand dollar transfer, and an eighty-three hundred sixty dollar transfer from library department head overage, because we didn't have a director, that money was allocated toward seasonal labor and INT SWR, I don't know if that's a sewer fund, or, um, so even if that could be spent, that overage no longer exists from the excess of that savings, from not having a director for that period of time.
They can take our money and not tell us.
What was that?
They can take our money and not tell us?
I guess so, um, yeah, it, it was on the, it was in the select board, I'm, I'm the nerd that reads all of the pages of the select board meeting packet, and I noticed that, that those are two of the line items regarding interdepartmental transfers.
Okay, but when did they tell us?
They didn't, they, it was spent on library stuff, wasn't it? Yeah.
No, he said he moved it, he said he took it and put it to other stuff.
No, 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 the, the interdepartmental transfers, meaning that library department head, there's an account, there's an account number specific to library department head.
And it went to staff, te, library temporary staffing?
I think that, that's what I thought, but maybe I misunderstood.
If it went to library temporary staffing, then-
CEM, CEM, what is CEM?
We have on-call people, right?
Then, then maybe it is library.
Yeah, it's gotta be.
What is CEM?
I don't see how they could do that without us knowing.
So, what is INT SWR, is, is, so am I mistaken that it may be going from library salaries to library non-salaries?
Gosh, your brother-in-law.
INT, internet, internet server, I don't know.
I don't know.
Why don't we go back to the FY twenty-four budget, though, so I think generally-
No, this is FY twenty-four.
No, I know, no, I know, I know, I'm saying, but for materials, if you're talking about, I don't know, under, I don't know, whatever, you said it was twelve thousand that needed to be spent, approximately?
Eleven, eleven thousand.
So, I mean, I think that's certainly, and if you spend al- almost all of it, and you go over by a small percentage, that is something that's certainly within the state aid, um, expenses.
Oh, yeah, you gotta go over, you, you can't risk it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't we lose a certification, is that what you're talking about?
Well, possibly.
Potential, I mean-
Possibly.
We don't want it to-
But I don't, I don't, I mean, based on the previous director comments, I think that's, if you're a percent or two, under certain cer, you know, under these type of circumstances, I don't think that's gonna be a big deal, but obviously, that, I mean, you should try to-
Right.
Hit the, hit the budget to zero.
So we just have to really figure out what we've got, and then keep on ordering, that's pretty much it, we've got to, that's gotta be the main priority.
Yeah, just push your department heads to expend what they had budgeted.
He just wants our, our voice of support to say, yeah, go for it, so, yes.
Oh, yeah, definitely go.
Yeah.
Jumping up and down.
Okay.
And then regarding-
See, yes.
Roger's discovery or comments, I, I think that's just something someone needs to look after, like-
I think we do.
Because I, I, I don't have an answer for what those transfers are for.
Well, they, there's certain accounts, and, and so they actually list the long sixteen, twenty-digit account numbers, and where they're going to, and so, I don't know what all these prefixes and one hundred dash six ten dash one thousand dash fifty-one twelve, um, to these two different, um, CEM, seasonal labor, and I- And so I don't know what all these prefixes and one hundred dash six ten dash one thousand dash fifty-one twelve to these two different CEM, seasonal labor and INT hyphen SWR. So the specific account that is identified as being Library Department Head and the transfer from that to, that specific account would be identifi, it's also identified. So that may be a Mary Loria question, our town account.
Yeah, I would encourage Tom, if, I mean, you can, you can ask me for details of Roger, but I would encourage you to kind of look after that and see if you can get some more information on that.
Should meet with her, too, if he hasn't already.
I mean, it wouldn't.
We're scheduling something, yeah.
Fantastic.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot that Mary and I need to.
Yep.
To go over.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that to our attention, Roger.
I would just second what Roger said earlier, just real quick about the, the percentage, so let's just make sure we're, we're aiming for the right percentage.
I do think, I think that the hours, though, Dana, we talked about that, right, like, I think the hours that the library is open affects the percentage. And we have to keep in mind that our hours did dip down for, you know, the, in the winter, the winter months. So we were, so we had pretty extensive hours and we're back up to pretty extensive hours, but it was reduced a little bit, so that could.
Could change it.
A little bit, yeah.
Okay. I'm assuming there are no other questions on that, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which would be the Friends update, Carrie.
Yes, all right, so the, the Friends of the Grafton Public Library had their annual meeting on Friday, June seventh, and the timing was just wonderful because Tom was able to come with his lovely wife, Elizabeth. So thank you, and we had, there was a nice turnout. Thank you, Erin and Doug, for joining us, well, it was a very enjoyable evening, so it was right in the historic reading room of the library, so it was, it was great. So they re-elected the same slate for the Board of the, of the Friends, so, so there's continuity there. And the, really, the next big event for the Friends, so as we mentioned before, they're not able to do the ongoing book sales. Looking forward to, you know, in the fall for that to resume. So the next big event for the Friends is the back-to-school book sale. And the library has, has confirmed that the conference room A and B will be able to be utilized for that. And, and that's really very much appreciated by the Friends because it is the largest fundraiser they're gonna be able to do, especially this year. Typically, the Friends will do two large book sales, one in the spring or, or winter, and then the back-to-school book sale. So I'm very much looking forward to that. So the dates of that will be Saturday, August twenty-fourth, and Sunday, August twenty-fifth. So it'll be a shortened timeframe on, on Sunday, and then you on, you know, and you part of the day on, on Saturday as well.
All right.
And I think, I think that's it for the, for the Friends, so.
Great.
So thank you.
Yeah, I'll just comment, I'll just comment, yeah, thank, I appreciate the Friends, I, sort of one of the sort of unsung heroes, you know, as far as the amount of work they do. And, you know, with the sort of space crunch, and, and that the community, just from the turnout, the community really looks forward to these, these book sales and, and everything like that. There's a lot of people who really rely on getting these good quality materials.
Yeah, especially the teachers, too, and there's a special discount for teachers for the back-to-school sale in particular. And that's, you, and I know, like, a lot of the, we do have former teachers as part of the, the Friends Board, and they're so thrilled to be able to help furnish, you know, new classrooms for the, for the teachers, so.
Yeah, so it's hu, yeah, it's huge, so.
Thanks.
Thank you for that, Carrie.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Next up is administrative assistant vacancy, do we have any update on that posting?
We do, but William and I have been discussing that, that we, we, he did go ahead and re, and posted the, they, well, put up the posting, I guess we'll say. Posted the posting.
Posted.
And have received, I believe, it's about six or seven applicants.
That is good.
So we're both reviewing those to see which applicants we feel we'd wanna move forward with possible interview process.
Okay, and that's just as, as it comes in, if, if you find a candidate, you'll just interview him, or are you kind of waiting for a pool to bring in?
He waited for, to gather some, and then he sent me a file that I've been reviewing, and he's been reviewing, and we are, we met the other day, and we were, we started talking about which candidates we were thinking of, of bringing in, and about the numbers of what we would like to, how many people we'd like to bring in for interviewing.
Okay, great.
Doug and I worked with William, as you know, and our interview process, and he, it was, you really enjoyed working with him, he did a nice job.
William's been fantastic, yeah, yeah.
Great.
Yep.
Any questions for Tom on that? Okay, next up is the walkabout, so I think Christopher and John did the walkabout.
Yeah, we did.
Yes, yep.
Do we have a condensed version of the walkabout results?
I would love to hear Chris's point with you.
Sure, 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 so I think the, I think top line is, I think for future walkabouts, at least in the, in the near term, I think we'll probably try and do them together, is what, what we came to. Many of the issues, it sounds like, are things that everyone here is aware of, from John's point of view, there wasn't too many new things. We had a good conversation with the, one of the librarians, she mentioned that that HVAC issue and noise is still present.
Was that a teen librarian, was that Debbie?
It was.
Debbie Jackson, or?
I believe it was Mary.
Merlin?
The children, the head of the, the.
Borrowers.
Borrowing services?
Borrow services, I think she's, yeah.
John already wrote up the, the bathroom, and.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the, wait, what, what was the bathroom?
The ventilation issue, she said that the bathroom didn't seem to be getting much ventilation, we talked about that briefly.
Stop bathroom, right.
Yeah, we talked about that briefly in relation to the, the HVAC stuff.
Okay, I missed that, thank you.
I missed that as well.
Yeah, so those were the two things that came up that I think we were, we were unaware of, or, and so the, I don't know, John had a couple pictures as well. But I think the things that kind of came up, and again, people are mostly know of these, the gutters we've already talked about, there's some stonework on the front steps that it sounds like have been brought up previously, potentially. The backside garden is going in, like, all the musical instruments, I don't, they may be fully in at this point, I don't know, Tom.
I know the toadstools are in.
Yep, we, we didn't play them, but one of the kids did.
I, I played them.
I, I.
You did, you played?
Tested them.
Okay, good.
They're, they're working, yeah.
So that was good, so those looked really, those looked all, looked really great. And then, let's see, there was some masonry around some of the windows that we questioned whether it was actually a problem or on purpose, cause it was pretty regular around a couple others, but it's not something I have seen before.
Is this the old building or the new building?
Uh, the new building.
I think it was all on the new building, yeah.
Yeah, we noticed it as we were kind of around the back by the kind of backside of the community room.
Hmm.
Yeah, it's, it's not clear if it's a real issue or not, so.
Yeah, it very well could be on purpose, I, I don't know, but it was like, there was almost like missing mortar between some of the bricks, but it almost looked like there was some venting. But it's not something I've seen in other brickwork, but that's not my specialty.
Sounds odd, definitely sounds odd.
And I think that was, that was, oh, there was some water damage in the ceiling in the community room.
But was that the old damage, though?
That's all old, I think, as far as I know, yeah.
Kind of under the green roof.
Yeah.
And I think that is pretty much the list of kind of the things that we noted.
Yeah, the only other thing that came up, again, that is a known issue, but it's more of a recurring, like, it's kind of fixed, it kind of goes away, kind of comes back, is the do, the issue with the doors.
Yes.
So I guess the handicap door specifically was busted, but that, that was fixed. But now the, the main door, I think, just isn't locking. And so they have to use their bike lock thing, and, and so that, that's been talked about at length, but it, I'll just throw out there that the, the library, it's supposed to maybe mention, like, maybe we just go back to using keys. Like, if it's something that's not too expensive to either install or enable on those doors, they just use keys. Or we potentially just have to bite the bullet and replace it with a functioning system. The brief background for that, Tom, is my, my understanding is that the system is not one that the rest of the town uses.
Right.
And it's, I think I heard that the manuals were all, were all in German or something at some point, so it seems tricky.
You actually have an update on that, don't you?
Yeah, I didn't hear, I didn't hear about the German manuals.
Okay.
But I'm intrigued by that, that's interesting.
Oh, German, too.
I, I do know that it's been an ongoing issue, and I know that there, that the staff has been put in a position where they need to sometimes figure things out on the fly. Because the system has changed. So for instance, on Friday, I don't, I can't remember the date now, seventh or eighth, whatever that Friday was, we had the power outage. It, it, it changed things, right? So we also have a problem with the staff entrance card reader, where the, we, and a, a maintenance person came out to look at it. The card reader is, is reading the card, so you get an acknowledgement that it's read the card, but it's, the software is not sending the message to the door to unlock. So there are ongoing issues like that. The front doors are locking up so that when the staff come in the morning, they have to figure out an alternate method of, of making sure the doors are open for the public. William and I have been discussing this, and so he seems to have a plan moving forward come the new fiscal year.
Okay, all right, great.
Good to hear.
So, Tom, I have some insight into why the door is doing that. Because I was with Heidi one day when the, the schedule wasn't, you know, locking that, that back door by the parking lot. And we, we went through and we tested everything.
Yeah.
And it seems almost like, and I know you were hyper-focused on the staff entrance, but I guarantee if you tested the other doors, they would respond the same, so I don't.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, so.
The, the, the reason I mentioned the staff entrance is cause that was a new one.
Sure, sure.
Prior to the power outage, that had been working fine.
Yeah.
So that was, that was a new.
So, so I know, I know Roger was more involved than I was at this particular incident, but I think it was determined that probably could have just rebooted the server in, in, in that, in that back, you know, network closet, and that, that would have restored functionality. But at this point, nobody was willing to risk restarting something that, you know, we really shouldn't be that close to, I guess.
Right.
So I don't know what, what the answer is, and who, who would be, I don't wanna say brave enough to do that, but I would say your IT people, rather than the very expensive, you know, door lock company.
Right, so the other day, when Jonathan, the IT person from the town, was there, he did extensive work on it. He's the one who got the ADA compliant doors working again, cause.
Oh, great.
Two of, it was, it was two-thirds of it about was working, but not the outer entrance to get in, which is the one you really need.
Right.
He was able to get that working again by, by doing exactly what you're, what you're talking about, and he spent quite a bit of time talking to customer support or technical support.
Oh, good.
To try to find out.
That's exactly what you want, yep.
Yep, and it could be something that if it's a recurring problem, that you need to reboot it once a week, or, you know, something like that, right?
Yeah.
Just to, if it's a buggy software.
Right, right, and it's, it's, it's a little unclear where the bug is, so, yeah.
Okay, I know we, I kind of interrupted the, were there any other questions on the walkabout, or any other comments on the walkabout?
Uh, no, I don't think there was anything else. I guess th, this is something we've kind of talked about before, just of like, i, is there someplace, like a, a shared network drive or something that we could get, like, write access to, so that we could drop the pictures in there, so that there's continuity over the years of like, you know, what, the walkabout pictures and stuff?
Google Drive, maybe, or something?
Yeah, I think that would be for Tom, once he gets familiar with the networking, would be something we would submit to Tom, and Tom could, Tom could.
Okay.
Right?
They could file it by year, and wonder what we did.
Cause as a trustee board, we don't, right, we submit all our stuff to the town, meeting minutes and agendas, but we don't really have a repository for that information, it makes sense that that would be at the library.
I mean, we have a, we have a shared file for library staff.
Yeah.
We could put it there.
Yeah, I don't, we don't wanna use Google Drive, I think that's, the town's moving away from that, so I think we would submit it to Tom, and then Tom would upload it to wherever they go.
Yeah, I, I mean, I was hoping to kind of like, take the middleman out of it and say, if, if Tom can give us like, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Write permissions to either Office three sixty-five or Google Drive, whatever the town is using right now, to one of those file storage drives. They pretty much all have web interfaces nowadays, so if that's possible, that'd be great, and that way Chris and I can just throw pictures in there, and, and then we can hopefully share the, share link, share a link out to the rest of the trustees from there as well.
That would be great.
Okay, yeah, that would be great.
And that way, and then I can put all the old pictures.
You can take nice pictures, too, and share the nice pictures, not just the.
I, I do, I do take some nice pictures as well, from time to time, so, yeah, yep.
Okay.
And that should be it.
Great, thanks for doing that, I mean, I know a lot of them are, you, you discovered are recurring, but it's certainly great for this board to hear things like that, because, right, if that means they're not getting fixed, or they continue to be issues, so. Thank you for doing that. Are you guys volunteering then to do next month also?
Yeah, and I'm happy to do that kind of in, certainly the medium term.
Okay, I mean, we do like to have everyone involved, and so that, you know, everyone gets a chance to do that every once in a while, but certainly next month.
There's one thing, actually, that just came to mind, but there, it, it was related to the community room leaks, I guess, it's just the, is there, do we have any update on the green roof and what, what we wanna do about that? If there's, if we're gonna have someone.
At this point.
I don't, as far as I know, that it's not been determined that any of those are that new.
Oh, okay.
Right, so.
So is it a wait-and-see thing right now?
My, my suggestion, or my, my thought would be it's still a wait-and-see.
Okay.
Right, and then maybe that, this is a good opportunity for Tom, like, this is like the starting point, keep track of any kind of new leaks in the community room, and then we can approach it as they arise.
Okay, all right.
Did you have a, hey, Roger?
When we were talking about the doors, it just reminded me that whether it was this wind or, or people shaking, not realizing that, you know, like bicycle locks, you know, once that, those locks are on the doors, like, that means like, the building's locked. You know, we were kind of kidding around in our last meeting about like, what was the cause of the, the alarm?
The alarm going off, yeah.
Which led me to the next thing, is that the alarm company may still have my name as, as the primary.
Okay.
Because in the absence of a director, the default was the chair of the trustees.
Did you live in town?
What was that?
And you lived in town?
I lived in town, and, and so they would call me, and then the first thing they would ask is, they're saying, alarm's going off in whatever zone, do you want the police to show up? And I'm like, the answer is always yes, and so, so I don't know who.
Hey, Tom, if you can look into that, and you can, I'd be happy to support you on that, so you can add my name and number.
As a backup.
Roger, did you have a key? We had, we were talking about this, and we weren't sure if you actually had a key.
No, and, and maybe I'll, I'll defer that to our audience member Cindy, or, or maybe it was Sarah, was someone that had communicated with me advance of Tom starting, that it was a, a key, but I think it was his key. I was never, I never had a key, and I think we discussed as a board that we weren't proceeding in that direction to have any of the board members have, you know, I, I thought it didn't make sense, but I think I, I, we came to a consensus that, that none of the board, including the chair, would have a key to the library.
Yeah, I don't think there's any purpose. I don't see a purpose personally, either.
Not less, we have a backup, like, if Tom's not around, or if he's on vacation or out of the country or something, it would be good.
Well, he would have, he would have a designee.
Yeah, either another library staff, or maybe even like DPW or the police station, for that matter, police.
The town administrator, like, there's a lot of other town employees.
Okay.
Okay.
I agree, I don't think it really should.
And I think it was convenient that, because we were elected, we're all living in town, and so it was kind of super easy-peasy for a, a board member to be called, but I, I never had a key, so.
Okay. All right, moving on in the agenda, thanks for the walkabout report, is new business, first up is garden update from Dana.
Yes, thank you, so I've been, I just wanna bring update up, I wanted to update everybody to what's happening, and I thought that, that it would make, it would make sense to, sense to call it the grounds and garden. And maybe we need to have a committee and some people that will help out, because right now, basically, we have two volunteers who've been working, I think Christine Crepolte has been doing it for a couple years, and then we have Anne Lakowski, and she's just started, and they're both really dynamic and doing a lot of work.
Anne Lasowski.
Lasowski, yeah.
Yep.
So we need, we need some help, and what I thought I would do is just give you like an overview, so you know what's happening, so in case you get any questions from different people, cause the gardens are changing. people, because the gardens are changing, and the grounds themselves. So, what I was going to, we started with talking about the back of the building, I'm going to call it, where we're having the installation of the instruments, and what that, what, how, this all came about is that there were, there were, basically, there was a lot of out of the project, out of the budget project requests, and donors, people within, from the community, wanted to add to the, to the, you know, to make the library better than what it could be, with the town could support. So, that's why you see all this stuff happening, it's, so it's all funded by the capital campaign, but really through individuals in the town. So, one of those areas is what we call the amphitheater area, so part of that was the gardens that you see, that are, that are, that are existing, and then also, we had talked about, it took us a long time, but we finally were able to find musical instruments, metal large instruments, that the children could play on, and that the librarian, the library directors there liked and thought would be effective. So, we went around a circle, but finally figured out, we're going to install them, and Pearlton's been installing them, so it's taken a while, because they're putting them very deep into the ground, and there's cement, and they're taking their time, and they want to make sure it's perfect. So, what you've seen so far is the mushrooms, a couple of weeks ago, I know Tom helped us, and Sarah Bannister was helping, and so was Doug, and so was myself. Anyway, figured out good places for them, and Sarah was happy with them, the three, the mushrooms, they go up in height, and they're kind of, they're together, so that a kid could run through them, you know, could go one, two, three. So, that, those are complete, and then the other, up the hill, there is going to be four different butterflies, and they're like, they're on a green base, and then there's, you know, there's the flop, the wings itself, and those, I'm trying to remember how, the mushrooms have like a little, like, I don't know, like a bong, you hit like a little-
Mallet.
Mallet, and I'm not sure what the butterflies have, but those are also, right now, those are, those are, the cement's been laid out, it'll be, there'll be mulch over it, so it'll be safe, and those will be up in the hill. And the idea is, Sarah, Sarah thought it would make sense that be able to see the children when you're inside, which would be good, because other kids could see them out there and say, "Hey, maybe I can go out there and play." And so, and then, very close to the door, there's going to be what we call a tenor tree, and it's like a large tree, and it's musical. So, that's what's been happening, it's taken a while, but it should be done within the next week or so. And then, we also, we, we just installed a raised bed that's there. So, if you go out and look at everything, you might say, "Oh, my gosh, things are over, there's too much here." What's happened, it's the second year of the garden, and it's just exploded, and so what we're doing is, we're weeding, which is kind of a normal thing to do. But what we've also done is Christine's wonderful idea was, she's put out a, there's a garden page, I guess, in, on Facebook, or one of the social media sites, where people from Grafton, they trade, they, you know, trade off perennials, so she's letting people know that, "Hey, we have these beautiful lupine, lupine perennials." So, she's working on that, and I think I sent everybody an email today, because I worked a bit on that, too. And I sent you guys some pictures, because, I don't know if you had time to look at them, but one was from Maine, a friend of mine's a photographer, professional photographer, and he took this picture of Maine, with these beautiful fields of it, and if you look at what we had, ours was pretty, pretty neat. So, anyway, it wasn't a mistake, what happens is, they just really grew, and they, they do shoots under the ground, so they're, they peer all over, so we've gotten, we did a lot of them, Christine did that today, a couple of hours in the heat, and so, there's only a few, there's a few plants left, but there'll be more, so I'm just letting you know about that. And then-
Thank you for sending those, I did see them.
Oh, you're welcome.
It's nice, it's nice to see the exterior, not just the interior of the building, being used, you know, that a lot of people think of libraries as just interiors.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's what we were really, we were really, we were really lucky and gifted by so much that townspeople wanted to give, and that's why you see the community patio, and that's why you see the furniture out there, and also all the beautiful gardens, that was all gifts. And so, we're also going to be doing similar thing with those, what we call, they call swamp, swamp irises, and those are going to be moved about when, when we can, they're going to be weeded. What we're trying to do is, if you go out, if you go out, if you come by the community patio, and you keep on going down the, down the path, you'll see the children's amphitheater, and then to the left, there's like a hill, and that has, that we've been populating with ferns and other plants, or in other areas, to put them there. Some, some plants needed to be, to have more shade, so we moved them there. And this idea with the Irish roses, I mean, irises, Christine had today, because I've been saying, I really want to create a barrier there, because one of the concerns is, when the children are out there with the librarians, they might want to run up that hill and go out to the frontal library, and we don't want that. So, we're slowly but surely, we're filling in that hill, and they're going to do that with the irises, which is a great idea. We'll see how it works, we've had success with the other plants, so, I'm just letting you know, if you look at it, like, my son looked at it, and he said, "Well, Mom, there should really be like an access there, out to the, out to the, you know, to the, to the other part of the, of the garden." And I said, "That's a great idea, but that's like a hundred thousand dollar project." So, maybe in a couple of years, someone may want to do that, you may be happy with the way it's going. So, I'm just trying to explain it in case people ask you, like, "Hey, what's going on?" Because it's, you know, the gardens do change, and the front, so, then, in front of the, in, like, where the entrance is, we've been correcting some weeding there, and making it look better. We've taken a lot of, we had some on the roof, we had that, the green roof, there was succulents on there, which we put down on, onto the, near that area that's near the entrance, and they've been doing well. One problem is that the, the salt, we think, might have killed some of them, so we're going to try to figure out what's going, so you know. And then, the reason why I'm calling it the grounds is because you started to talk about those sandbags, we were, I was out there today, and I've noticed them, and we want to, we have to figure out, we got to make sure that area's cleaned, and I, you're busy, but maybe a committee could help you do that, figure out what needs to be done, and we can actually pitch in and help. So, and also, the, the chairs and all the tables, we want to make sure they're placed in such a way that it's, that it's accessible, so that's an important thing. And I also was looking at it, not that we're going to do this, I thought, it's still pretty sunny, we might want to do umbrellas, we went through a whole thing about that, because who would put them up, who would put them down? That might be a future thing, you might say, "Hey, you know, we need to use, we need that." So, I'm just letting you know about that. And the other area is the teens area, which you see, we now have those, I don't know, I would like to find out how they're, if they're being used. We had purchased some chess and checker tables, that are really large, and they're like, they can't be moved, but I'm interested to see how that's going.
We, we talked to Debbie, and I guess they don't have the, the pieces.
The pieces, yeah.
So, we need to buy some, we need to buy, maybe we can-
Oh, okay.
-use some of our budget money for that.
Well, if you, do you want, do you want me to send, who would you like to work on that, one of the teen librarians, you want me to send them an email, and just say, "Let us know what you need?"
I would reach out to Debbie, because she's a department head for, for teens.
Okay, I'll do that, okay, I'll do that.
But can we use our budget, like, does that count as library materials, or not? Because that means like library of things.
Right. It could, I don't know if we'd have time-
Just let me know.
-for fiscal year '24 to get it in.
Yeah, just have Debbie reach out to us.
I'll reach out to her.
Okay.
I like, we like to get them using it, because that's the whole point.
Yeah.
And so, anyway, so, the Eppston Street area, I know some people said, "Hey, you know, it looks really bare, what's going on?" It is the first year, because I talked to Pearlton about that, and they reminded me it's the first year, next year should fill in more, but needs some fertilizer. There were plants that we had to move out of there, because they weren't really, they, it was too sunny. So, as time goes on, we probably will add plants, but now's not really the time, want to see how things grow. So, but we could use, so anyway, that's, I wanted to let you know that. And then, again, we have the tables out there for the, for the teens, and then the community raised beds, those are all been installed, and Sarah Slotman's been working to get that happening.
Yeah, she's been very eager.
Yeah, Sarah's been very eager, and has done an excellent job putting those together so far.
Yeah, and using it for programming, too.
One of them is handicap accessible, but we are going to purchase a handicap, handicap accessible, an accessible garden that you can just kind of wheel underneath it, a lot of people could take a seat and just sit down, they don't really want to stand up, so, it's good for a variety, a variety of, a variety of people and uses, so. What I, what I was wondering is if, kind of now is the time when we really, we're trying to correct a lot of this, just do the normal gardening and the watering. The one thing is, I should say, it's a native gardens, and we did that in order to help get us the LEED certification, which means there might be some hybrids, but almost everything is native, there are some older plants in the front that are not, but that was okay, so just so you understand. And we did that because we want to have less maintenance, but however, with native plants, for the first couple of years, you do have to water them. So, that's why we had people watering last year, we have some hoses, we might have lost a hose, but-
So, we have hoses on that side of the building now?
We should have, we have on both sides.
Oh, good.
But we did lose a hose, so we might have to figure out what we're going to do, but I'd like to know if anybody wants to help, because it, it's really not fair for two volunteers to do it. I've been helping as I can, but not as much as I should, but if anybody would like to join, it doesn't, you know, even if you can come with your spouse, or your friend, or something.
So, weeds which are visible, and clearly, or simply need to be removed-
Right.
How does someone know, like, how frequently something needs to be watered, if it's a new planting, and when last time it was watered?
Well, we can work on that, we had, we can work on that as a team, but Christine's really good, she's there on Tuesdays mornings, I know that's not great for us, but, we also talked about maybe getting the Boy Scouts to help, but it would be great if we had a couple trustees that would help, besides Doug and myself, because we've been out there.
No, I can, I can be up there.
Okay.
And that's really fun, I mean, it's, it makes you feel good to be outside.
And I would just add, if anyone knows any groups, right? Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Honor Society people, anyone that's looking for volunteer time, there's definitely an opportunity to volunteer at the library.
It would be nice to-
Both inside and out.
But anyway, and please, if you want, you know, if you want to take any of the perennials that we've been transplanting, you know, feel free. But if you have any questions, let me know. It's sort of ongoing, but we're really finished with it, we're just maintaining it now, once we get these instruments in, and we're just kind of, the, the projects are really complete.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Dana.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, I'll let you know if anybody wants to help out, and I guess I would throw, I don't know if you, I'm also concerned about those doors, so, if you think this is something that this committee could work on, let us know, because we're all, we don't want the flood to reoccur, I know nobody wants that, but some of us, it keeps us up at night, especially when there's been floods, some of us have called the library, asking, "Is it okay?" But, it seems like, it seems like things are going okay, but-
I'll throw one thing out there really quick, that, you know, there's the mulch to either side of those doors, so I wonder if there's something where it's like, you could just dig a little bit down, and remove that mulched area for now, and so that way, there's a little bit of a buffer for the water to-
Oh, you mean where that, we could look at that?
Yeah, I think, I think we talked about that earlier with Tom, and talking to DPW, or just looking, talking to William to see what work has been done. You're talking about the teen, teen room, right?
Teen room, yeah.
Yeah, that we talked about earlier, so, okay. I am, I am conscious of-
I don't know if you need help, that's it, I just wanted, just because we need help, and I, and, you know, and the other thing, too, is if you walk around, you get, there's placeholder, there's like little place, name tags on the, on the, on the, the plants.
So, with regards to, like, you know, camp regards, like, we definitely would love, like, volunteer from the community to help, as, as far as like, what to do with the watering, like, if somebody could maybe create a schedule, and like, we could like, sign up for things, because I guess, like, I don't really know exactly what needs to be watered, you know, I guess it's just-
Well, right now, I think we have to look at everything, it depends, we, if we re, if we move things around, we'll have to water.
Okay.
Yeah, I think someone-
And with this heat-
I think somebody has to coordinate it.
Someone, someone needs to, yeah, someone needs to coordinate and put that schedule down, because otherwise, no one's going to know what to, time slot to sign up for.
I'll talk with Christine, I just, I don't know how much time I can put into-
I mean, we do have, we do have hoses and timers that we've used in the past, so we could set those up.
And the water's open now, it's not locked.
Yeah.
That was an issue last year, it's, it's open, it's not, it hasn't been an issue.
Yeah, I never understood that whole lockdown, there's been a big water thought problem.
Talk about that offline.
Okay.
I am, I am conscious of time, because we're kind of, kind of coming up on nine o'clock, so I'd like to move along on this thing.
Okay, great.
I would, I would propose, I don't know how important the library website is-
I just mentioned the library website, very quickly.
Okay.
It needs to be updated, not to blame anybody. I noticed the Friends stuff, you're still the president on it, Carrie.
Yeah, so who-
I'm not the president. I know.
So, who is, do we know who the webmaster is?
So, Dan Kushner is the, Dan Kushner was the one that knew how to do it.
Who was that?
It needs to be, Dan, Dan Kushner.
Oh, Dan, sorry. I didn't hear the first word.
But, um-
No, I'm talking about the, from the library perspective, who updates the website? Do we know that?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Not sure.
So, why don't we-
I think it needs like, not, you know, I think we need to update it, we might want to, some of the staff were saying, "Hey, maybe we reorganize it a bit," but there's no one that's really working on it, but-
Yep. So, what I would propose is, maybe this group looks at the library website over the next couple of weeks.
Would I do?
Tom can figure out who the, who has that responsibility of updating it, if presumably someone does, and then we can talk about that next month.
It is being updated?
Yep.
So, somebody's doing it?
Okay.
And I know-
I know Sarah said she does some of it.
I think Sarah Bannister has been doing some, I know, but I don't know who has the ultimate authority over the design.
Okay, that's probably you.
I'll talk to Debbie Jackson, too. And then, thank you for mentioning that for the Friends, I'll, I'll talk to them, and because I, that, yeah.
Yep.
I think it's some kind of technology that Dan knows, so we need to-
Okay.
Through Mr. Chair, I would just ask, I'm assuming that graftonlibrary.org is not actually technically part of the, the town server, as far as our ability to toy around with, with accessibility guidelines, WCAG web content, accessibility guidelines, I'm just going to call attention to everyone after the fact, you know, after tonight. If you go on the North Hampton, Mass. website, there's a universal, the wheelchair, universal accessible wheelchair logo, and if you, if you, once you click the logo, there are about, more than a handful of different-
Guidelines?
Not guidelines, but-
Accessibility options, right?
Accessibility options, as far as bigger font, dyslexia friendly, things like that.
So, Roger, Roger, how about you send that to, to Tom, and then Tom can, you look at it with the team, and then incorporate it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, just here, just North Hampton, Mass., just, if you go on the website, and that, you, there's the accessibility options, and whether that's doable, not only content, but the layout, the accessibility layout and stuff.
Yeah, so, I'll just add, and then I think we can, we can move on, but, so, at my company, But um, so at my company, we, we went through a large um accessibility um project for the website.
Oh, good.
And, but they had to hire a company to do that and, and replace the entirety of the, the website. And replace with a different page. So it's a very costly project.
Right, I don't, I don't think it's just a, a drop in.
Right, no, 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 it's, it's, it's a work, yeah.
Extensive.
It's, it's not a short term thing.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, but I think it's good to have that on the roadmap.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, that would make sense.
Great.
All right, thank you for that. Um, so next up is, it looks like we have what, two, three more things. Um, policy updates, Aaron.
So we had one housekeeping item that Debbie brought to my attention is that um, when we approved the three D printer policy. Um, it was supposed to go to the union because I think it was written prior to our process of having the union review everything to make sure that there was no additional, you know, work involved. Um, so pending, you know, further review, um, or anything that the union comes back with, that should go into um effect very soon. Because I think um, uh, the teen, uh, head of teen services there has quite a few cool ideas to, to use the three D printer for this summer.
And was that a policy we've already approved as a board?
Yes.
It is, that's what I thought, okay.
We just, we just never uh, allowed the um, the union to have a look at it.
So assuming there's no significant content changes that we don't need to, it doesn't need to, does not need to come back to this board.
Yep.
Unless the union sees something, it'll come back to the policy committee, then we'll bring it back to the board, so.
Great.
Um, so now that we have a director, um, well, uh, we have um, I hope, three, three members still of policies, uh, subcommittee, so we can, we can start to meet again about policy. Um, I think the, the date that seemed to work well for uh, for, for our library staff members. And, and for, for John and I, I think John and I are occupied most Mondays, Tues- Monday and Tuesdays. Um, so potentially, uh, the Wednesday, either following the, the trustee um meeting, so I would say either um, next Wednesday, we, we would, we would meet. Um, and you know, we'd have, we'd have a posted agenda, uh, because we're meeting um in public session. Um, and that the library director would be a, a voting member of that subcommittee. Um, but what I would like um, is uh, from, from your perspective as a director, to uh, maybe engage the department heads in, in, in draw some interest uh, from a, for a staff member to join. Because generally we had, we had four members, um, a staff member, a director, and then two trustees. So I'd, I'd like to continue that. That was very effective and um, you know, we cranked out a lot of good policies. We just haven't had that kind of factory i- i- in a while, so um, but we can talk more about that if um, if, you know, we can set a date uh, for next Wednesday. Um, that would be a good time to meet for me. Um, you know, six thirty, seven o'clock. Uh, I don't want to put, put you on the spot, but that tends to. Um, you know.
Go, Aaron.
Thursdays, you know, but generally like to meet during the week, not, not the weekends.
Okay.
Um, certainly you can get back to me.
Yeah, let me, take a look.
Yeah, all right, very good. Um, so beyond that, I think we just had a couple policies that are in their final stages. Um, that the policy subcommittee needs to review. And um, hopefully uh, there won't be too much back and forth. I know we have new town council. So that may have to go back to town council again if um, the new person hasn't seen that. And then we should have some new policies to uh, bring to the board.
Awesome.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Any other questions for the policy?
I, I don't actually know if this is the right way to do it. Uh, there's one thing that came up during the walkabout that was policy related. That maybe could be shared here. I didn't think to share it earlier until this occurred, if that's appropriate, I don't know.
Yeah, sure.
So one of the things that was confusing was that there was a note that uh, I guess dogs were being brought into the library.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so John was able to find the policy to share with them. And so there was some confusion that there was not a, a policy related to having dogs and not allowing dogs that were not service dogs in the library. And so that was clarified.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but just wanted to let everybody know that that had occurred and that was a question that had been.
But it's not in the current policy?
It is covered by policy.
It is covered by policy.
Do you remember what policy that was in?
Code of Conduct, I think.
Code of Conduct, okay, okay, great.
So just felt like that was, just so that people knew that there was confusion about that, but that's been clarified.
I would just, I would just caution the board um, for um, bringing any policy to the public. I think it, it's good that we um, we write and approve the policy and it's good to know the policies. But I think in terms of the operation of the library, if somebody's violating the code of conduct, probably better have a staff member.
Oh, that, yeah, this was just a staff member bringing it to our attention that this had occurred.
Perfect.
So that, so I just double checked to see if we did have the policy and I found it, so I.
Oh, I thought you were like, giving, giving it to the, the patron who is violating the policy.
Take a dog.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, perfect, thank you.
Great, yep.
Sorry for, for taking that time.
No, not at all. That's, and then Tom, yep.
Actually, because the, the, the dog policy was something that I wanted to talk about, um, because it has come up a couple of times recently. And coincidentally, um, it came up yesterday because we had um, a, a, I don't want to say an incident because but it, we had a confrontation between two patrons at the library. And um, where one uh, brought a dog to the library. Um, another patron was upset about it. The dog was outside initially. Um, there was some concern about the dog in the garden area, um, doing what dogs do. And uh, then the patron brought the dog into the library thinking uh, that they were allowed to bring the dog into the library. Um, the patron, I, and I know a, a lot of this because the patron called me and we had a conversation today. Um, the patron stated that they had called the library and were asked whether they were allowed to bring their dog into the library and they claimed that they were told that they were able to bring the dog into the library.
That seems unlikely.
And I checked with my staff who was on call prior to the patron arriving and, and all of them stated that they at, on that day, if it had been another day, we don't know, but on that day, they had not received any call from anybody about that. Um, John found it, so it was great, perfect timing because I was able to have the conversation with this patron. Um, they were just, they were concerned and wanted clarification. Um, and so I, I told them that according to our code of conduct, it actually states, nobody's allowed to bring any animals into the library. It doesn't really, it doesn't mention dogs at all. Um, you're not bring, allowed to bring any animals into the library unless they are service animals without permission of the library director.
Yep.
I, I wanted to just mention um, that um, our library staff does like to have a little bit of fun and like at April Fools' time, there were some jokes about things.
Timber being my.
Well, that was.
Criticessor, yeah.
Um, but, but yeah, so there, so that might have caused some confusion.
There had been some potentially mixed messages.
But I mean, it was April Fools', I mean, it was a joke.
Yes.
But in this, but in this case, it sounds like you handled it appropriately and the pa- patron responded appropriately?
Patron was completely fine once, once we discussed it. I explained that the, that my policy is going to be, well, I don't say policy, but my plan is to not allow, because it says with permission of the library director. And I don't plan on allowing that because we have too many small children, we have too many people with allergies, there's just too many other concerns. And it has to be a one hundred percent either way. I can't say, well, I like your dog, but your skunk is not allowed in the library. I do understand why it does say that with permission from the library director because there could be times when the reptile guy is going to bring snakes to the library for a program.
Yeah.
And that would need to be approved by me. Right. And so I think that's why it's written saying animals instead of listing any particular type of animal. So I'm perfectly fine with the, with the code of conduct policy. Um, I just want to know that I can share that with my staff so that it can be across the board as the official.
Yeah, I mean, that one is in place, right?
Right.
Yep.
It's, it's, it's posted. It's on the library website, so I don't see any reason why we wouldn't move forward with that. Um, I, I, I do need to bring up one other thing about that though, that some of the um, some of the mass general law citations that are in the, particularly in the code of conduct are not correct.
Mm-hmm.
So I think, I think there needs to be a review of the policies and make sure that, um, because sometimes they refer to, and I just know from, uh, one of the staff members brought this to my attention today that they happen to go.
Maybe that staff member should be on the committee with you.
They should, yeah, because um, she's, she's good at checking these things. Um, so I just think that we need, there, there, there's some discrepancies or contra- there's some little contradictory information. Some places we say we're fine free, other places we talk about the fines that we'll be charging.
Yep.
So I think there, there needs to be a re- review of the.
I think that's something the policy committee can review.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
The cool thing is that's why it's a standing committee because we know that
Yeah.
the target could always forever be moving.
Right, right.
Great. Any other questions for Aaron regarding policies? All right, um, I know, Tom, you've been talking a lot um, already, um, but do you have anything additional?
I feel like I've given the report already.
Yep, exactly. Do you have anything additional to add as a director's report?
Nothing I can, nothing beyond what I've said, um, other than that school is out and so we've seen an immediate uptick in usage, which is really nice. So the, uh, I knew, I knew which day school got out, out of the half day. Because all of a sudden I saw people coming in wearing shirts that had writing all over the back of them. Um, so we're already seeing uh, a real increase in usage and our staff is ready for them.
Excellent.
Great.
Are they all asking like, hey, welcome to the library? Is in like.
To me?
Yeah.
No. Yeah, not at all. I've gotten great response. I have had wonderful response with, with, uh, you know, when I'm, when I've met with the patrons. So yeah, people are very welcoming. Walking by my office, the big windows and sort of peering in.
Did you put your fishies up?
You, uh, if people have not been to the library recently, they do need to come and visit so they can see the, uh, that my fishbowl is, is well populated.
Ah, okay.
As well as, as well as some displays. I also put out displays promoting library materials because I didn't want it to be just about me. Well, kind of about me, not just about me. So it's also promoting library materials as well.
Fish is an animal. A mammal.
It's not a mammal. This one, they, they all have lib- they, they have library director permission to be there. Code of Conduct says I'm allowed to, allowed to let them be.
It's, it's contained.
Yes, they're contained, yes. So please stop in.
Yep. And we already mentioned this at the beginning of the, of the meeting, but um, you can, I, I can share one of the previous director reports. You can certainly look at them on the website, just to get an idea of some of the content, but certainly reach out to this group if you have any questions.
Great, wonderful.
So you'll take care of that. I was gonna, I was going to look through some of the old ones, so you'll take care of the.
If you would like to take care of it.
Like a half a dozen your way, like of the director, uh, the director reports, yeah.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you, Roger.
All right, sure.
Great, any other questions?
I said Tom might want to put his own spin on it.
Oh, definitely. These are just ideas.
I'm going to see the guidelines, you know, see what's done and I'll, I'll make it my own.
Yeah, excellent.
Yep.
Any other questions for Tom? All right, with that, um, we do have a public member. Do you have any public input, too, too public? Any input or questions for the board?
Leave it to the end, okay.
Well, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
I'm sure it was very exciting. Um, so next meeting, the, um, as Aaron mentioned, the policy subcommittee is still to be determined. Um, and then the next Board of Library Trustee meeting is Wednesday, July twenty-fourth at seven PM.
And I wanted to mention the next Friends um, uh, board meeting is July ninth. So Tom, um, they'll need to make sure that they invite you. You should, so it's usually seven thirty via Zoom. And they'll send out the link and everything. And then I typically serve as the trustee liaison to the Friends. But if, and any other members of the trustees would like to, you know, to join, um, certainly welcome to, you know, to do so.
And that's on the ninth, you said?
It's on the ninth. Would you like to come?
I think I would.
Oh, great, okay. I will make sure to send you the invite.
Great, thank you.
And, yeah.
And certainly our agenda evolves each, each month, um, so please reach out to me um, in advance of posting them. You know, if you have any i- items that you want on the agenda so we can make sure it's all corrected. This time I had to get a little bit early because of some timing, um, so that's why some of these didn't make the, the final agenda. But I'll push it as late as we can so we can get everything updated. All right, I guess with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion.
Second, uh, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. I declare this meeting ended.